Pierce, Pierce.
Get too close to the other van.
It's get too close is chaos.
You had it, you had it.
Oh, yeah, it really is. I like it. I've been to a couple of others and I've gone with it a couple times.
I saw the light.
No clue. What side are we feeling before?
I was afraid that they went.
I said, I don't cut off.
What she was saying, I mean.
Okay.
You know.
All right, it's after six o'clock.
Trey will be back in just a second.
All right.
She was going to get phone numbers.
It was a van pulling up, but I don't think Ms. Odom has a van. She has like a Buick or something, but I don't know what Joe does.
Kim, you were working mighty hard when I drove by the other day.
Listen, did you kill a bird?
I, what did you ask me?
Did you kill a bird?
I scared some.
Because I heard, I didn't know that that was you, and yes, I was working hard.
You really were.
And I didn't realize that that was you, and then, you know, in about an hour, I heard a shot, and I said, that was Jeff on the hunting truck.
Uh huh.
And.
All right, it's after six o'clock. Before I call to meet all, I'll ask Mr. Robinson to wait, he'll have to work.
Yeah, Lord, we just come to you as the mighty provider, dear Lord, and we just recognize you, that you're responsible for all good things. We are grateful that you gave us this day, that you blessed us with this day, our health, our strength. Dear Lord, we just ask that you be with us tonight, instill us with your spirit, dear Lord, as we go back into the county's business, and we just hope and pray that it's in your will. In Jesus' name I pray.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'll call to January eleventh, twenty-two, meeting all of the Greensville County Planning Commission, have a roll call with Pope.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Kane.
Mr. Jeff Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Walter Robinson.
Yep.
Mr. Stephen Allen. Ms. Bond Rhodes. Ms. Odom. Mr. Ann Pauling.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
All right, let me, the first thing on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda that you had in your packet.
The direction of offices, that's fair.
We'll do that for P I C with you. Okay, you'll take that over, Mr. Pope?
I'll take it over. This is our first meeting, twenty-twenty-two, so usually we get organizational matters at the way, so tonight we need to elect a chairman, vice chairman, and secretary, and I will open the floor for nominations for the chairman for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Plan Commission. I'd like to nominate Walter Robinson.
My second.
I'd like to nominate me too. Two nominations on the floor. We have Walter Robinson nominated by Jeff and second by Kim, any discussion on that? We have Mr. Kane that nominated himself, any discussion on that? All right, we'll bring him to a vote in the order they were made. All those who are faithful, Walter Robinson serving as chairman for the upcoming year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's do a raise of hands. One, two, three, four, five. Everybody for Mr. Kane, serving as chairman for the upcoming year, signify by saying aye for all opposed. All right, so Mr. Robinson will be the chairman for the twenty-twenty-two year for the Plan Commission, so I'll turn it back over to Mr. Robinson.
Okay, the floor will then be opened for vice chairman. Do you have a nomination for that?
I nominate Jeff Robinson. I nominate Jeff.
All right, I'm having a hard time here with this stuff. All right, we have Mr. Jeff Robinson on the floor, is there a second, his nomination? We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Here and none, I'll send you ready to vote, if Mr. Robinson, Jeff Robinson is vice chairman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Secretary, nomination's over, secretary, I guess that's a pretty done deal.
I nominate Lynn Pope.
A second.
I will, second, and is there any other nominations for secretary? We have one for Mr. Pope. All in, any other discussion on that? Here and none, all in favor of Mr. Pope being secretary again, say aye. All opposed. Okay, here we go for twenty-two, approval of the agenda you had in your packet, are there any additions that we know of, Mr. Pope?
Uh, no, sir.
Anybody else have anything to add? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
We have a second on that? Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, the minutes from the last meeting that had gotten so long ago, but I looked them over, I didn't see anything that, obviously, I put anyone else.
I thought they should have did a good job and recovered a lot of ground.
Yeah.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as printed?
So moved.
Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Got a regular session, we need to, now, we're gonna need to go in, no, it's not a public hearing, no, this is a regular session for the Z T eight dash two dash twenty-one, and we need to familiarize ourselves with that, because that was something that came up, it's attachment B in your packet. All right, Mr. Pope?
Yes, excuse me, back in October, we brought a zoning text amendment before the Plan Commission, the board of supervisors had recommended two changes to the zoning ordinance. One was to establish a ceiling of eighty-five hundred acres as the maximum total acreage, I'm sorry. Seventy-six hundred acres as the total amount of acreage for solar facilities in Greensville County, that will constitute four percent of the total acreage in Greensville County if approved, and also allow both three cases of more acres of solar development, so we have a little under four thousand acres being developed now, between five projects, and this would allow, like I said, additional three cases of acres. The board also wanted your comments and recommendations on establishing a minimum of hundred acre cycle requirement for an approved solar facility. At that meeting, the Plan Commission, it requested to meet with the board supervisors to discuss solar issues, and I think when I was out on vacation, December the twenty-second, I think y'all received them, then I, by front of the board supervisors stated they did not wish to meet concerning solar issues, and so we're here tonight to get your recommendation on these proposed two changes to the ordinance. We will also have, and he should be calling in any second now, a gentleman from JMU, he's a professor and an expert on solar facilities, so if there are any questions you would like to ask him tonight concerning solar development and its impacts, he's there for y'all, you need to ask any questions, so. He was supposed to call in at five after six.
Ten past ten.
I've got his number, so I said, if he had trouble calling in, we could call him and catch him into the meeting, so Trey will get him on the line right now.
Lynn, can we, can we ask him his general opinion?
Yeah.
Of these issues?
Ask him anything you want. Yes, sir.
I can ask the question, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask it, but I'm, I'm wondering, why didn't the, the board of supervisors want to meet?
I can't speak for the board, that's something y'all, you would have to ask the board members or Mr.?
Maybe Mr. Kane, because chairs will light up.
Well, I think we, I'm pretty much thinking our position already, so that's not about, if I'm wrong, I'm a little bit, and the thing we, we question, you know, if, 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 if a recommendation to.
Dr. Miles?
Dr. Miles. Speaking.
Good evening, this is the Greensville County Planning Commission, you're on a conference call with all the members, thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate, appreciate your call.
All right, Mr. Miles, we're just starting the, the tense, we're requesting recommendation from the Plan Commission, so, all right, and just stand by and listen, if any Plan Commission members have any questions, they can ask you anything they want concerning solar.
And Lynn, could you give us a little intro?
Yes, Dr. Miles is a professor with JMU, and he's their leading expert on solar development.
In, in I L E S?
In I L E S, yes, sir.
Dr. Miles, thank you for, for calling in, this is Kim Wiley.
Hi, Kim.
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about just solar in general, I think that a lot of people don't understand that when solar developers start the process of trying to plan a project, that they've put in a lot of work, and a number of years have passed before the project ever gets to any government officials, and I was just wondering if you could speak to the whole, the PJM process, and kind of just an overview of, of, of solar development, that it's not that a solar developer decides to do a project and within a matter of months, they bring it to the county, that it's a lot more involved, and when ordinances are constantly changed, it's really difficult for, for the solar developers.
Yeah, okay, so I, I, by the way, I've read over the document that you sent a little while back, Kim, that had your minutes from a previous meeting and various appendices, so I have a little bit of an understanding, I think, about what the situation is in Greenville County right now, and I'll do my best to try to address your question, but please don't hesitate to tell me if I'm going off on a tangent, or you'd like to clarification or anything else. So, to your point, I'll, I'll offer a little bit more background on myself and my position as well, so you all understand kind of where, where I'm coming from here. As you already acknowledged, I am a professor at James Madison University in the School of Integrated Sciences, and my background is in physics and engineering, but I have been directing for quite a number of years the Center for the Advancement of Sustainable Energy at JMU. Now, that center addresses solar and wind and energy storage, and we all also consider conservation and efficiency, and it started as originally a wind energy center, but as solar has become more prevalent and has been accelerating, at least in recent years, more quickly than wind, we were encouraged by the State Energy Office to broaden our, our portfolio, which we did several years ago. I'll add, add to that, that although we are an academic center, to a large extent, we act and behave a little bit like an extension, like for instance, an ag extension, we're sort of an energy extension to the State Energy Office, and as you all probably know, the State Energy Office in Virginia was formerly, and for many, many years, known as the Virginia Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, but only in recent months, rebranded as the Virginia Department of Energy, or simply Virginia Energy, recognizing that energy, and in particular, clean energy, as, as defined by the governor, has taken some degree of precedence over mines and mineral operations, and of course fossil fuels, and under Governor Northam, there have been a number of actions taken over the last couple of years, culminating last year in the passage of the Clean Economy Act for Virginia, which sets rather aggressive goals for our transition from being more of a fossil-based power generating state to, well, if the goals are realized by twenty forty-five, Dominion will be one hundred percent a non-carbon emitting power generating company, and they're already heading that way, and most people don't realize that, including their nuclear portfolio, Dominion's already generating more than fifty percent non-carbon emitting electricity, and AFCO and various cooperatives and so on are following this, so I just thought that little bit of history might be helpful, recognizing that this has been a major priority of the state, not just throughout Governor Northam's term, but prior to that as well. Now, there, there of course is some uncertainty as far as how Governor Youngkin might, might address this, but I think to a large extent, driven, if for no other reason, by the rapidly declining cost of solar and wind and advances in technology, and quite frankly, great concerns about carbon emissions and impact on the climate, I suspect that we'll see the momentum not shift hardly at all, and that's to, to a large extent, because there are so many, we're now seeing a, a large number of jobs being created in this industry, and the economic benefits that come with that, so I thought that little bit of process might be helpful. I'm not reading from a script, it's just sort of off the top of my head, things that perhaps a, a planning commission might find useful. So before I go on, would you like to ask any questions or any clarifications as far as everything I've just stated?
No, but, but thanks for doing that, no, I did not realize that now it was called the Department of Energy.
Yeah, they go by Virginia Energy now, I think officially the Department of Energy, but it's, it's, it's quite an interesting shift. So, Tim, to get back to your question, going back about a dozen or so years, and this is that time when we were much more involved in wind energy, and that was largely because, quite frankly, a dozen plus years ago, solar simply was not as cost effective as it is right now, you didn't see the level of solar development either in Virginia or anywhere else, because solar was costly, and per kilowatt hour that was produced from solar wasn't attractive economically or in any other way, but wind power, if you go back in time, the year two thousand was about the time when utility scale wind power became cost effective, and what I mean by that is, it reached parity in terms of the cost per unit of electricity generated to what we would have called traditional power generation, that is, from coal, from nuclear, from other sources, hydro, so wind, wind started to really pick up around two thousand, and, and that is largely why we became more involved in that earlier on. Around two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, there about solar caught up, and that is the price of solar had declined so much that solar became cost competitive or reached a certain level of parity, but now you have wind and solar that are attractive for a number of reasons, but especially the reason being that, that they, when you consider what we call a life cycle cost, or the levelized cost of energy, and that considers the cost to permit, to develop, to install, to operate, maintain, and ultimately decommission, when you take all those costs and consider how much energy these power plants generate, what you get out is a cost per kilowatt hour from solar or wind that's very similar to, and in some cases, lower than what a cost to generate from natural gas or coal and, or nuclear, so that's why you see so many businesses now jumping on the bandwagon and very eagerly looking for projects to develop, because there's, there's obviously a financial benefit of, of business opportunities that they're pursuing. Now that said, in, again, a little bit of background, wind energy did not take off right away in Virginia, and in fact, there is only one fully permitted project, and that's in Bonnettock County, and there are several in the pipeline, but offshore, Dominion has been quite proactive for several years, and they've got a project that's already underway. They've deployed the first two test turbines, and they're taking all the actions they need to, to start building out a, a rather large project, about twenty-seven to forty miles off the coast of Virginia, beginning probably twenty twenty-three, thereabouts. So I'm gonna go backward in time again, when wind was starting to pick, pick up, excuse the metaphor there, the, the first family, it was a family venture in Highland County to build a project, and what became quite clear, this is around two thousand eight-nine, maybe even earlier, is that there was no state-level permitting process, and that created a lot of hardship for that family, and that project ultimately was not built, but it did instigate legislation, I think in the Kane administration, that created a, a uniform state permitting process for wind and solar follow, and other energy sources followed, and we have now, in the state, a situation, which I think you all are probably aware of, where a, a locality, a county must first approve a project before it can go forward for state consideration, but when it reaches the state, it goes through what's called a permit by rule process, whether it's solar or wind, there's a process for each one, and it really is quite a, an intricate detail, but at least a clear process through which the state permits the project, and of course, there's been a lot of projects permitted this way in the state. Now, having said that, the, the state is sort of at an advantage, because they have this process, and they have the apparatus and Richmond to consider a project, and I believe all projects have to be reviewed and acted upon within forty-five days, but as, as you probably are well aware, counties, the localities, and particularly those that I think are more rural, are disadvantaged to the extent that you don't necessarily have the apparatus or even the knowledge base, at least when your first approach for wind or solar projects, to consider them, but ultimately, what has to happen, and a reputable developer, developers will insist that a county has an ordinance, I understand that you have an ordinance, and that there's been some modifications to that, if I'm, if I'm reading the, the document correctly, so, so what you're experiencing now is not unusual as compared to what we're seeing in other parts of the state, and that is, we're, we're seeing communities, initially at least, embracing this, there's, there's a financial opportunity for states through tax revenues and, and, and other monetary benefits, but there is, there reaches a point, I think, where county, county planners, supervisors, or citizens at large, they start to have, I wouldn't say buyer's remorse, but they start to realize that, you know, up to a certain point, solar may be desirable, but beyond that point, may not be as desirable for any number of reasons, and I think one of them that I hear most frequently when I'm engaging in different counties, and I think this has been articulated somewhat there, is land use, and whether a particular community is comfortable with the notion of land that could be used for other purposes, whether that's development or agriculture, or something in between, whether they want to see that particular air, portion of land be used for solar. Now, my position on this, among others, has been that whatever decisions are made, they should always consider the fact that solar projects, unlike, let's say, construction of a development or an industrial park or anything else, solar to an extent is temporary, I understand twenty-five years doesn't seem that temporary, but to be quite honest, at least at the end of twenty-five years, or whatever the intended life cycle of a solar farm may be, that land can fairly simply be restored to its original state, there isn't much that's deployed in a solar farm, except maybe some infrastructure underground that can't be removed in the soil, you know, in, for agricultural purposes or others, so I, I tend to remind folks that while, while a course entered, they seem like a long time, at least there are options, and quite frankly, in twenty-five years, we don't know what our energy situation may be, we know that right now, solar gives us one of our best solutions or partial solutions to address the declining production from coal and fossil fuels, and it does so in a rather clean and straightforward manner, in a, in a manner that's cost effective, but looking forward, you know, a couple of decades, we may very well decide, you know what, solar just isn't the best solution anymore, and as I mentioned, that land can go back for another use, so. Anyway, let me pause here, and Kim, I hope I'm addressing your question to some point, but feel free to put me back on track if I got off on a tangent with it.
No, no, you are, you're doing a great job, I, with that said, with you saying that solar, even though that the useful life may be twenty-five years, I think, and again, we're, we're guessing, because we don't really know what the board supervisors was thinking when they, when they decided in September to change our ordinance, but I, I think that for some reason, that they think that solar doesn't preserve the rural character of our county, and, you know, we are a very, a very rural, rural county, and most of our land is zoned agricultural, and we allow solar in our agricultural district, and they did not change that, that part of it, but I was wondering if you could address how it, it's really a little bit of a misnomer to say that solar doesn't preserve the rural character, because it does, as you just said, it's, it's temporary, I don't really know any other business that comes in that guarantees after its useful life that they're gonna restore, restore it back to its original state, and most businesses don't do that, so I was wondering if you could address that and talk about how it does, in effect, still attract wildlife and, and et cetera.
Sure, well, let me start with an anecdote, because I, I, on a much, much smaller level, I, I, or scale, I had a personal experience in this matter, I, my wife and I built a house and moved to a, a rural part of Albemarle County eleven years ago, and about two years then, we installed a roughly five kilowatt solar, or collection of solar panels, ground mounted, and we had every right to do it, there was no county provision, there's, we don't have any language in our neighborhood that would have prevented it, but, but we did get some resistance from a neighbor, now, there, there was no legal justification for that resistance, and in fact, ironically, this is a neighbor who, in, in many other ways, is, is very intent on sort of conveying their, their, shall I say, sustainability credibility, their, their, you know, what they drive, what they eat, how they grow their food, et cetera, but they didn't want to see solar panels, they, my, my cars, and my truck, and our camper, and our kids' toys and all this, but they didn't want to see solar, we have them out view from our neighborhood, and that was precisely what they said was, it doesn't, it conflicts with the rural appearance or character of, of the neighborhood that we moved here to live within, so my point to sharing this is, what you'll find, I think, with regard to solar, and we see it with wind as well, that to an extent, resistance of this sort is often connected to aesthetic or perception of what a view should, should or might look like, and maybe for that reason, among others, well, certainly one reason is ordinances most often require that they have language to this effect, solar facilities, unlike wind facilities, are rather easy to mask, so if one does object to the appearance of solar because it looks modern, it looks, you know, technological, you know, it, it, someone's personal view is that it is in conflict with the natural view. you know, if someone's personal view is that it is in conflict with the natural beauty of a particular area, most solar projects that I have had any involvement with include in their design rather complex and intricate plans for masking with vegetation, fencing, et cetera, so that at least from the street level, they're largely out of sight. And you have to go out of your way to have a view. Now, I haven't looked at, I mean, I'm not privy to you, and I haven't had access to any of the designs that you all have had a look at so far for your county. And so I'm not a physician to make any assumptions about how detailed you know, a plan of this sort is incorporated into those. But I think that would be one point that could be made, is that in ordinance, if your ordinance doesn't already have very specific language about how the view of solar, of a solar facility can be obfuscated, maybe that would be one thing to consider.
Well, we actually have it in there. That didn't seem to help any, but we do have that. We have buffers and setback requirements already in the ordinance. And again, that did not get changed. But
And that is pretty standard practice to have that, you know, certainly setbacks, but also to have buffers or or, you know, some means for obstructing the view so that whether, I mean, sometimes there's practical reasons for doing that. For instance, reflection or glare and it would drive the eyes or something of that sort. But I intended some of the meaning to the Rockingham county as they were going through that. And I've looked at some plans for at least a couple of the projects in Rockingham and elsewhere. I have seen presentations from developers where they spend more time in effort explaining the plantings than they do the actual solar. Because quite frankly, the solar itself is pretty straightforward, and, you know, it's panels all at the same angle, pointing in the same direction. But the vegetation plan can be quite intricate. And in some cases, I've seen where they have chosen, selected a not just a single or even a couple, but several different species to ensure that if, you know, one is, if they attack by something that they kill it, that others would still be there. And also the requirement that those buffers, those visual buffers be maintained. So back to your original point, Kim, as far as the, what the board might be thinking in terms of preserving the rural character, I don't know. You know, I I don't, I wouldn't want to make any assumptions about what is driving it. But I can say this, because I've seen this a lot with wind. And with wind, which of course is much harder to shield the view of wind turbine, you really can't do it. But the aesthetics of wind turbines, I would say, are by and large the largest point of objection. So I suspect that it is, I suspect that the supervisors are being honest, that they're concerned about the view. Now, that doesn't surprise me, but how or what measures might be taken to to raise their comfort level with that, or to ensure them that, in fact, the rural character views aren't going to be so adversely affected as they might think. The only way, or certainly one way I could think to maybe address that would be to develop maybe a series of visual simulations. And I don't know if those have already been generated on proposed projects or not, but that's usually one good approach.
Yeah, what we have, there have been several projects that got approved before the pandemic, where we saw visual simulations. One thing that we haven't done, which maybe we could consider, is having a greater setback if the project maybe is near an area where someone lives or, you know, has sheds or anything like that. We haven't addressed that, but maybe we, you know, that's an extra layer that we could put in there. You know, again, we are a rural county, and there are a lot of the projects that we have seen, there's no one in sight. But there have been, you know, one side of the project has been near homes. And maybe we should, should consider having a greater distance between that or more vegetation planted or something like that.
Yeah. You know, another thought, I gather from my review of the document that this is, at least in terms of some of the citizens' positions, from a citizen's perspective, at least those who have engaged here, they're concerned about their own right to develop in a manner that they deem to be appropriate or desirable. And if I'm reading the tea leaves here, at least in some cases, there's the objection to being told, you can't do this, but yet that person can do that.
Yes, yeah.
So is there the notion here that that landowners who want to develop solar are sort of being singled out or are being disadvantaged because their use is less desirable in the eyes of the supervisors than someone else's use?
Probably, you know, I had a comment from a citizen who said, you know, that they could go and put up a fence and put a hundred head of cattle, and they didn't need a permit. Or, you know, where they could put a solar, but when they put a solar panel, not only do they have to get the approval of the board supervisors, but of course, they have to get all sorts of state approval, and the process takes, you know, two years almost to get through it. So, you know, I've heard that concern. Again, you know, that's the way that it is, that the state law says. So there's nothing that we can really do about that. But yeah, I think there is some frustration with people being told, you know, that they can't do it. I think before, our ordinance allowed them to do it. They didn't necessarily like the process that they have to go through, but they could do it. Now, our ordinance limits it to the point that, you know, it's really hard for a solar developer to be, you know, to want to develop it because the new ordinance says that it has to be under a thousand acres. And it has to be a mile and a half from another project. And it has to be a mile from a transmission line. And so you, there are not any solar developers that really are wanting to develop anything under a thousand acres.
Right. You mentioned earlier in this conversation about, or I think you alluded to the need to have consistency and a, you know, not an ordinance that's going to be shifting in the course of a few years. Right. Because that lack of certainty, I would say that that's costly to a developer. And that uncertainty, you're absolutely right, that's going to drive them away. That's going to cause them to lose interest in developing there. So at some point, in some manner, I think it will be very important for you all and supervisors to reach some kind of a common understanding. And I also recall seeing some language in that document about sort of a wait-and-see approach. Well, let's build a couple of these and then reassess. But before we go there, let me ask you, I wanted to understand this because it came up several times in reading the document. At present, there is a, the maximum acreage that can be developed is seventy six hundred. Is that correct?
No.
None. I'll let the planning directors talk to you now.
No, there's no maximum acreage set right now. They, the board has want to adopt an ordinance limiting the acreage, and therefore, they've sent it, this particular case to the planning commission for their recommendation, comment on imposing the limit. And that's why we're here tonight, you know.
Okay. So is it your intention to specify a particular limit? I saw four percent in there. I mean, do you, as your own entity, have a desire to see a limit as well? Or is it, you know, there would be an alternative approach, which is, look, let's just evaluate each project on its own merits? But, you know, there probably is and should be some practical limit. And the technical limit, of course, could be driven by how much can the power lines that pass through your county, how much power can they accommodate? I don't know if that study has been done already, if you have a, I know, I think, Kim, when we talked before, or maybe I read this, there are several different power lines at different voltage levels. But any developer would have to go to PJM and request, and of course, pay for a study that determines whether their particular project could even be accommodated. Do you happen to have that number? Is that number acceptable?
We don't. No, we have, we have three lines, and we have a hundred and fifteen kilovolt line and a two hundred and thirty kilovolt line. And we have five projects approved, and those projects are on those two lines. But we have the advantage of having a five hundred kilovolt line. But because our new ordinance that got passed in September limits the acreage to a thousand acres, well, therefore, we can't hook to the five thousand kilovolt line. And that's why we have requested the meeting with the board supervisors because we were concerned that they didn't understand that what they just did was limit, so, well, not limit, but stop any activity on that five hundred kilovolt line. So by doing that, they were in essence saying, well, if you're going to develop solar ingredients, well, you've got to do it on the hundred and fifteen kilovolt line or the two hundred and thirty kilovolt line. And you can't use the five hundred kilovolt line at all. And it's, you know, in my opinion, that's just, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense. That's a resource that we have. Why not leverage that resource? Why not use that resource? And I understand that because you've got to have more acreage to hook to a line of that size, that then, yeah, it takes up a lot of land, which I, again, it's just my, I think that that's mostly their problem with it, is that it takes up a lot of land. Well, the reason that we have so much open land is that we haven't had any industrial development people knocking at our door. And so this is kind of the situation that you are left with, where, you know, we don't have manufacturers wanting to come here. We don't have, you know, anything that is drawing anyone here. Now, we have a mega site that's ready to go. So if we were to attract a huge industrial client, we have space set aside for that. So it's not like we're just, you know, willy-nilly kind of saying, oh, we'll put solar, you know, everywhere. I think that we, you know, we have a plan that if we were to attract some industrial clients, we're, we are on three oh one and ninety five, and we have space. We have for them to go there. So it's not like that, you know, we would be using this land irresponsibly. You know, it's not like we have water and sewer there or any other type of infrastructure other than these lines. So my thought is, why not take advantage of it? But I'm, again, we don't know, we haven't heard from the board, and they wouldn't come to the meetings tonight. But I just, you know, felt like that maybe they did not understand. And maybe you can talk a little bit about, when you've got a line that's five hundred kilovolts, how many megawatts you need and how much land you need in order to develop projects to hook to a line that's that capacity?
Yeah. Kim, before I go there, let me ask you a couple clarifying questions, so I make sure I understand the situation as well as I can. There are currently five projects approved. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. But none of them are built out yet?
No, we've got a couple that will probably flip the switch this year.
Well, they'll be finished probably early spring, yes.
Okay. And when you say approved, do they, all five also have their Q positions with PJM?
No, we're talking about construction will be complete hopefully early spring. Yeah, they're already
On all five?
Yeah. We have one, two that will be complete early spring. We have one, I'm going to say forty percent complete, and one that's just starting. And we're reviewing the plans or getting ready to review the plans. I'll get them on seventeen for the fifth one. So, yeah, these projects have been approved by PJM and the county, and they're permitted by rule from D E Q.
Okay, got it. All right. And these projects are on the order of how large generating capacity?
Eighty to a hundred, well, one on sixty, the rest eighty and a hundred megawatts.
And they're all around eight hundred to a thousand acres. And all of these were approved pre the pandemic, and they were all, of course, approved pre this latest ordinance change.
And you said that, you know, additional projects or future projects would have to, maybe I, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but I thought I heard you say would need to access the five hundred kilovolt line. Are you saying that the two lower voltage lines are now at their maximum capacity? They cannot accommodate more solar?
No, I don't know that. I probably didn't make myself clear. Because in September, they passed, they amended the ordinance to say that your solar project has to be under a thousand acres.
Okay, I got you now. Yep. And let's see, if my math is right, a thousand acres is probably somewhere on the order of about a hundred and fifty megawatt project or about?
Right. Most of these projects, you know, have been around a hundred megawatts. You know, but then if, you know, I think that there have been a couple of developers that wanted to hook to the five hundred kilovolt line. But they wanted those projects, obviously, to be in excess of a thousand acres. Because otherwise, the math didn't work, the budgets didn't work. They couldn't build an eight hundred acre solar farm and hook to a five hundred kilovolt line.
Yeah, I totally get that. Yeah, I'm thinking to myself that a hundred and fifty megawatt project might be right at the edge of where a five hundred kilovolt connection would be feasible. But, right, as you go up in voltage, the connection costs go up significantly. So I would think that probably a solar project would be more, would probably want to be closer to even two hundred megawatts to make that five hundred kilovolt connection feasible. Now, having said that, I'd have to look at a map or maybe sit down and sort of study the layout of the current projects and proposed projects. But would it be feasible for, even if they have to be a mile and a half apart, could multiple projects, either from a single developer or maybe more than one developer, be developed in parallel so that they could spread the cost of connecting to the five hundred kilovolt line across several projects?
Don't know. Again, that's why we asked you, because we were at an impasse. We needed help.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that's what I'd be considering here. It would be helpful to know what, how much capacity remains on the lower voltage lines once these five projects are built. And one thing that I can jump on the PJM website and learn what is publicly accessible about the Q positions that are already in force with PJM. But, right, five hundred KV, that's going to mandate a very large project. But I do think it wouldn't be unheard of, and again, I'd better look at a map to see what these lines are. It's not unheard of to add It's not unheard of to add, um, a, a little bit of transmission to get from a project to, to a power line, to a transmission line. Um, so I just wonder if some maybe clever design and engineering, if, if there are sites that are already identified and desirable to developers, uh, there could be some, uh, an approach that would, that would try to tie some proj, or, or connect some projects together, part of them in some way. I, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, so bear with me.
Okay.
And I think there is, there is some capacity left because we have another project that y'all will be getting here shortly, just maybe through PJM, between Party River, Spamus Lake, and a couple others, uh, working on projects that go forward to our ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know the numbers, but I think that, you know, with, with the ones that have, that are already approved and in process of being built, that there is still capacity left on the 115 and the 230, and there's quite a bit of capacity on the 500. That 500 kilovolt line is a relatively new line.
Okay, okay. Um, Kim, I think it might have been Jamie there to have originally connected us. Is Orsted responsible for one of the projects that is already approved?
No.
Yeah, developing a couple projects. I've, I've been talking to Orsted.
Okay, so they don't, they're not one of the ones that, that's already in the pipeline?
No, no, we, we've got one company putting together a project on this 500 KV line and they, they're not ready to spin anything yet. I'll talk to them later, Stan.
Okay.
You will have some questions then, Mr. Robinson? Are you just making?
Uh, hey, Dr. Miles, one, one thing that we were sort of preparing ourselves because the projects seemed like they were getting larger and larger and larger. And so we were kind of bracing ourselves for that. Then all of a sudden, it seems like overnight, the projects were getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And so that's one of the things that the board has asked us to consider is putting a, uh, a hundred acre, uh, I guess that would be a minimum.
A minimum, that's a minimum.
Own project size. Do you have any advice or comments on, or pitfalls or anything that we should be thinking about along those lines of a minimum size?
Yeah, that, that surprised me a little bit because the, the tendency for both solar and wind projects is to build out larger. The larger they build out, the more profitable they are. Um, both because of the sheer greater generate, generation, but also the, um, accountability to scale and the ability to distribute cost across a greater number of generators. Um, why that would be, I don't know. I'd have to give that some thought or maybe, um, one of the things that I'm able to do, I, I can access, um, so I think I spoke to you about this a little bit, Kim. Um, I'm coming into tonight really trying to gather as much information as I can and then better understanding of where you, where you all are at, that where the community, you might see the community heading in regard to solar. Uh, I sit on the board of the Virginia Renewable Energy Alliance and, and that gives me close contact to a number of individuals who are solar developers. For all I know, some of them might be active in your county right now, I don't know. And developers usually aren't sharing that information that openly. But these, these are folks who I'm close to and, and that would be the kind of question that they probably can answer better than I. All I can surmise is that they are, see, you know, they're, they're always looking at that sweet spot. If you're trying to make a project, the bigger a project that you make, the harder it is to get it permitted, it's more parcel, potentially more landowners. Um, you know, any, any number of complicating factors that might push them in the downward direction. But on the other hand, uh, the smaller a project, the, the harder it is, uh, to get it penciled out. So, uh, I, I'd be speculating. But I'm, I'm, I'd be surprised because I think in general, um, granted a given company usually has that sweet spot. They, they want to build, you know, not this, no larger than that, no smaller than that, maybe for any number of reasons, but, um, I think they tend to lead to larger. So that's a rather long-winded not answer, I apologize.
I, that's okay. I think that, and again, uh, we're just guessing, but our, uh, local electric cooperative was, you know, has been trying to develop some projects. And I think, and of course, these projects will be three to four megawatts, you know, around 50 acres. I think that, that that was the intent, uh, as to why they put that in there, that they did not even want to have, um, co- cooperative solar. Um, we did hear a case back in the, in late summer, um, but we unfortunately had to deny it because it was, uh, in a residential section. And again, like I said, we're, we only allow solar in agricultural. It was, it was in an urban service area where water and sewer was near. But I, I think that that was the intent of this, maybe less than a hundred acres, is that they didn't want to seek cooperative solar. That was going to be one of my, one of my questions to you, what, what your thoughts were on cooperative solar. I know that the county, you know, is not able to get any revenue sharing money front from cooperative solar, but what your thoughts are on that?
So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I, I wanted to ask you about the cooperative solar. I, I now makes more sense. So is your entire county served by the cooperative?
A, a large portion of it. Part, it's no, it's about half Dominion, half Mecklenburg Electric is, is our cooperative.
But half Dominion and half Mecklenburg, okay. And it's Mecklenburg that wishes to build out some generating capacity?
Yes, they contracted with a, a solar development company.
From ASO was named a project.
Uh, I've forgotten, I've forgotten the name of the, of the solar development company that they contracted with to try to get some projects underway.
Okay.
And, and so far they, they've only brought one, uh, to us. And I'm not sure, um, I'm not even sure if, if they have been successful. Of course, Mecklenburg Electric is in other localities. I'm not sure if they've been successful in getting a project in other localities or not.
And is, how about Dominion? Have they been active in your county?
Oh, yeah, we, we have approved a project that they built out. Um, and then of course they're, they're going to be the buyer of a couple of the other projects.
Okay, great. I made some. So, so it's, it's your feeling that the supervisors may object to the cooperative from developing a project, at least in part, because there would not be the revenue sharing opportunity?
I'm assuming, uh, because of that. And, um, you know, I, I really, I don't know what other reason. There is really no difference other than the county doesn't get any benefit, but the community gets the benefit because the electricity stays in the community and hopefully eventually we will have a lower electric rates. Um, so I really don't understand, you know, that at all because I, I can understand if you don't want mega huge projects. Um, that's, that's understandable. So therefore, are you willing to have small projects? Typically you would think, well, the answer would be yes. Uh, but then they say no to that too, so, um.
Yeah. It, just speculating here, could there be pushback because small projects then might be, would, would, would they be object to the notion of maybe a patchwork of, of more projects? In other words, would, would, is there sort of a Goldilocks scenario where they don't want the really big projects, so they don't want the really small ones either? Uh, because then you'd have so many projects. Again, I'm, I'm trying to think about, if I'm concerned about you and if we could tuck a handful of these projects here, there, and a few other places, but if we have a whole bunch more smaller projects, then does, does that, could that, could there at least be the perception that that's more, um, more of a concern from a, a rural character perspective? Again, I'm just thinking out loud here. I, I, I can't read the minds of supervisors.
I don't, you know, again, I don't know. When you're only talking about 25 acres, you know, I don't, I don't know. Um, but I just was thinking, you know, in general, are other localities that, that you've heard about, are, are they pro cooperative solar or are they saying the same thing? The localities are, you know, aren't getting a benefit, which, you know, is a little bit of misnomer because the citizens, you know, would be getting a benefit.
Right. And I have not heard of any case where a community or community leaders have opposed efforts by a cooperative. I'm, I'm thinking about, I know A and M out on the eastern shore, they are pursuing this, um, central Virginia, um, I think Shenandoah is looking at this. Um, I know, I, I, I'm not aware of pushback from a community or cooperative to pursue projects.
All right, let's, Dr. Miles, thank you for your, your time. Is there other questions, many other stand on? Mr. King? Okay. Um, my question would be, this is Walter Robinson. My question would be, it, I think you are pro solar. What are the negatives? If, if, uh, since you're a professor and, and, uh, you've been studying this, what are the negatives that, that you found?
With solar as a power generating source?
Yes.
Well, okay, so at the site level, that is where projects are installed, um, any perceived negative, I think, or, or recognized issue that could arise with a project that's not properly designed or, or installed might involve, for instance, uh, how stormwater is, is managed. Uh, so I think you typically would have, have to have, again, I'm not, I'm pretty knowledgeable of your ordinance, but I, I would assume that, uh, how the, how stormwater is managed at a site is a consideration. I've seen some instances, uh, to one up in, I think, close to Northern Virginia of a, a project that was probably not, um, designed quite with. I've seen instances where, where the, uh, water and heavy storms has, has created problems. But that, that can be addressed with appropriate civil engineering and, and, and whatever that needs to take place. So what, what you have are impermeable surfaces, but underneath they are not impermeable. So, uh, as long as that's addressed and handled properly, it shouldn't be an issue. Uh, one of the things that we're seeing more and more of now is solar projects that are built with the idea of particular species of plants being incorporated into the, into the farm. So for instance, pollinators, because as, as we understand, uh, the, the hyve population is an important one and, and their habitats are, are more and more at risk. And, you know, these, these are species that, uh, or species of plants that can coexist quite well with, with solar project. Any kind of a, a vegetation that requires less maintenance, um, say mowing, trimming, et cetera, but that doesn't grow to heights that are going to be, that are going to eat direct sunlight would be desirable. Um, I can out loud your problem. I, I mentioned glare and reflection, so that, that's typically factored in. Make sure that, you know, at particular times of day, drivers aren't going to be negatively impacted. Um, now, on, on a larger level, I know people have concerns both about sourcing the raw materials for solar, uh, the manufactured solar panels has a dirty element associated with it, but, uh, you know, research is ongoing to make that process as clean as possible. And then of course, uh, at the end of life, uh, how, how the decommissioning is handled and recycling, et cetera. They're valuable materials that do, that are desirable to reclaim at the end of life as well. What, what I, I, you know, I kind of came up as more of a wind person. What I like about solar is that it is very easy to maintain and operate. Panels are pretty much plug and play and forget about. Um, the, the weak link is more associated with what we call the balance system, the inverters, uh, other electrical elements that are aside from the panels. But the panels themselves are very durable and don't really, uh, have any weaknesses that I'm very familiar with. We've had solar, a solar facility on our campus that was installed in 2003. It was just, um, demolished a few months ago because it's going to be replaced with a mo, a more modern system. And I think we had to have the inverter, uh, serviced twice in a couple of decades and that was this. Uh, I mentioned I have five kilowatts on the back of my garage and, and I've done practically nothing with it over 10 years. So they're very, you know, it's a very simple operation to install and operate. Um, i- is there a specific concern that you might want me to consider or elaborate on?
In our public hearings, in our public hearings, there've been a lot of, uh, questions about the, what's going to be with the, with the panels when at the end of the life. Uh, there's been some concern about if this land would ever be productive. Uh, again, I've also heard some people say that they think that even after it's, it's decommissioned, that area will be so unproductive that the landowner then would come to the county and say that it shouldn't be assessed at a normal rate, uh, because of its unproductivity. So therefore the rest of the county landowners then would have to ante up to offset, offset that. Um, I don't know. Unfortunately, we don't have any that's been decommissioned, uh, to know how that's going to work out. And it's down the road beyond my lifetime, so I don't know. Uh, there's some of the negatives that, uh, that has come before us. We kind of got caught shorthanded when all this started. We had a, something in our ordinance and, 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 uh, about it, but we were not prepared initially for the onslaught of, uh, as many applications as we had. And we've kind of, kind of worked through it, uh, haphazard at times, um, doing the best we can, but we hope to have a handle on it, we hope going forward.
And I, I will, uh, add, add to that, that, that I, I think we've done a better job than some of our neighboring counties because as we ride down the road, we see solar panels developed right out to the right of lane and, uh, and they're very unsightly. So that was kind of the first thing that we accomplished was buffers and screenings and setbacks, you know, from, from a visual standpoint. So, so we, at, at least we didn't go first. We did learn, we think, from some of our neighbors' mistakes.
Sure, sure. And I think all that is important. There, there are always going to be some members of the community who don't want to see them, prefer they're not there at all, but if they're got to be there, they should be screened and, and outside as much as possible. Um, to, to the concern about the, I guess, quality of the soil, the quality of the land afterwards, I'm, I am not aware of any studies or any examples where a decommissioned facility, uh, left behind land that, that had lost its, its usability or value in any way. Uh, maybe that can be offset by, uh, stripping some, you know, some thickness topsoil and putting that long-term storage. I, I don't know if that's even a common practice or not. Uh, but, you know, the, the panels themselves are, are rather benign, uh, I mean, at least benign in deployment when they, when they are, are removed at decommissioning. The recycling and, and the dismantling of the panels themselves, again, uh, you know, there's a, a certain element of dirtiness associated with that, but that's going to be the case in any pro, in any utility scale energy project, particularly where they involve, where involved fossil fuels and nuclear. Um, it's, but, but what, what is installed is very modular and, and rather removable and a decommissioning plan would, uh, in, in most instances that I'm aware, would require all the above-ground infrastructure to be removed. And then of course, anything that's set in the ground, um, removed down to a certain depth so that the land. a certain depth so that the land itself would resume its original character. To that question, I just don't have any experience or knowledge of that. But again, bearing in mind that, you know, I think you made the point, utility-scale solar development is a rather new phenomenon, so we don't have a lot of experience. We're seeing now the first generation of large wind turbines coming out of service and so, but one of the concerns there that is actually spawning its own industry and research programs is what do we do with these enormous composite wind turbine blades? You know, how do we make some use of them rather than, we don't want to bury them? And one example of what's being done is in the northern mountain states where they're ground up and used as a raw material for roadbeds. So there, you know, there are creative ways and can be even profitable ways to benefit from these structures after they're out and served.
And I think what Mr. Robinson was alluding to, too, there's been a concern about the zinc leaching from the rack systems into the ground.
That's one of them.
Yeah, that's one of the concerns. If you want to put it back in the farm and operation afterwards. And another concern I have is that battery storage, people are starting proposing these projects.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly a fair concern and whether there could be language or some element of a decommissioning plan and bond that, if that's specific, that there'd have to be soil testing after the fact and remediation if that's called for. I think it's important for an ordinance to be written to be a detailer that needs to be to ensure that, you know, the county is made whole at the end of the project. And if that is a concern, I can certainly do a little bit of research and look into that for you to find out whether there's been any cases where that has happened.
Yeah, we can reach that probably to DME also because I've dealt with them on some of these titanium properties where they have to put solid amenities and everything back in soil at the end of the life, you know, to make it productive. Yes, and they might be another source for us to tap into as far as any zinc concerns or anything that might leach out of any panels, you know, if a disaster happens.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I'm going to ask a question.
All right, must have had to.
Dr. Miles, my name is Joe Antone. I have a question for you. That question is, would you be an advocate or not an advocate? As I listen to your dialogue, I can see that you're really a strong supporter of solar panels. Would you be an advocate or opposed to having a mandate on how much land is used in an area? Right now, as we look at it... Right now, as we look at it, right now, as we look at the documentation by, I guess, the board of supervisors, they have already counted a survey or got some data that supports that Emporier has been quite aggressive with the use, with the allowing solar projects to take place. I think we are, as we look at the three that are here, Emporier is the largest one. And I just would like to know if there is a, based on 190,000 acres, is there a good window of how much or how less you would advocate?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I think I understand the question and I really don't have an answer to that. Again, in the document that Kim sent me, I saw cited examples from other counties, including Rockingham, which has been through this process recently itself, as you know. I really think that's going to be on a county-by-county basis. I think what maximum or limit fits one may not fit another and that's going to depend on a lot of things. You know, how dense is your population? How's your land used? You know, what is the terrain? How acceptable are our power lines? Things of that sort. So I don't think that, I could offer an answer there and I don't, you know, you mentioned the notion of advocating for solar or anything else. I mean, I really don't. I consider myself very much agnostic when it comes to generating source, only, really only up to the point where I think it is, I do strongly subscribe to the state's goal of getting off carbon. So whether that's solar, I did take the time last week to look at your wind resource in your county and I don't think there's much of an option there. So I think for a county that might want to be self-generating, self-positioned and to engage in this clean energy transition, solar is probably the best option you'd have. So, yeah, I apologize. I don't think I feel comfortable suggesting, you know, four percent or two or six or anything else. That's not for me to decide at all. I think what suits you all as a planning commission and ultimately supervisors and the citizens, it'll be up to you.
Yeah, Dr. Miles, it's Kim again. Joe hit upon something that the supervisors did mention that they had polled a couple of counties and they cited Culpeper and Rockingham. And, you know, to that point, I was trying to make the same point that you made, that we can't really compare ourselves to Culpeper or Rockingham, whereas, you know, a lot of times, you know, you do ask other counties about certain things that you're going through, they're going through similar things, but with solar, this is completely different because they have a different topography than we do, they have different electrical infrastructure than we do and their size, you know, is different. So it's hard to even compare ourselves to a neighbor who does have the same topography but has different infrastructure, you know, resources, which is, you know, really where I think that, you know, we do, like Joe said, we need some help because we do have these three lines, but we only have 197,000, you know, acres and what is that sweet spot of, you know, should we cap it, you know, or should we not? Because in my, you know, nail with the ordinance the way it is, I don't see any point in capping it because we're only going to have, you know, maybe do more projects and that's, you know, that's it. And so it really is no point. But if we were going to allow development on that 500 kilowatt line, then, you know, that, then I think that that's something to consider.
Yeah, and I was thinking a little bit about this and again, I read this in your document, at least solution to this. You've got projects coming up right now. You'll have, I mean, essentially you could have five projects built in so many months. Maybe there is some value in the idea of letting those projects build out and then pausing. I've seen that happen in some counties as well. And what that, the solar industry and the interest in developing solar isn't going to go away in months or even years. It's here and it's here to stay. So I don't know that it wouldn't be, that there would be a negative aspect of letting these projects that are already approved get done and then spending some time seeing how they fit in with your community and giving your citizens the opportunity. And in fact, I think that that's a point where there can be some education that takes place. And I don't mean, you know, more traditional than school type, but some sessions that I suspect that developers who are active in your community would be interested in partaking it. These are the kinds of activities that our office is equipped to help develop and implement and maybe take, you know, six months in your pause and then revisit this and say, all right, now we know. Now we know what the economics of these projects are like and we understand what the impacts are and we're maybe better informed now to go forward and take another fresh look at an ordinance. Because eventually, I think it is going to be critical that you all are able to project a common position and, you know, a degree of competition about how you want the county to approach this. And my impression is you're not there now and maybe it's going to take that degree of development before you're all ready to come back to the table and kind of sort this out. I hope I'm not speaking out of line here. Just again, from outside of looking in, I think it's going to be really important for the community at some point and you all leaders of the community to come to an agreement in terms of how you want to progress.
Well, thank you, Professor Miles. Is there any other questions? I appreciate your time and your effort in talking to us. I'm sure we may contact you again if you meet with us.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. I would be more than happy to come down and meet with you all or you and the supervisors and dig into this a little bit further. I've jotted out a few questions that I'm going to run by some of my peers who are active actually in the industry, which I am not, and, you know, make sure I haven't stated anything here that I would regret later, but I try to, try not to, I, yeah, I don't want to, I want to try to be as transparent as possible on the full front.
Well, thank you.
We are a resource and we're happy to help on any way. Just don't hesitate to call on me anytime.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Miles.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Okay. We've heard from Professor Miles there and some other information. We're probably five years too late in talking to him. Maybe we should have talked to him back in 17. But anyhow, it is what it is and we are here tonight. On the agenda is ETA dash two dash 21 is back in front of us again. Do you have anything to say about it before we look at it?
The board is just looking for your recommendation on those two items.
Well, you know, my deal is, and this is just my personal thing, I thought we made our recommendation before this.
Well, I think the final conclusion was I want to have a meeting with the board.
We did and then that didn't happen.
And you didn't make the recommendation, you know, so.
Yeah.
You know, I find it very perplexing that the board is here, planning commission is here, collectively, we're supposed to be united and supporting the citizens' meetings. If we have a situation where we feel like we're not clearly understanding where the big fish is and the little fish is, I don't understand why we couldn't come together. Even now, to talk about this, this is very, very important and something that's not going away. And I just find that that is almost incomprehensible, that we can't talk about something.
As I remember, the meeting in October, you made the motion for us to try to have a meeting to discuss it and it just didn't take place. And then I get the letter in December of what you got a copy in your thing and that was the end of it. And I think that as Mr. Kane said tonight, we already knew that position, so they didn't meet. So what are we supposed to do now?
You can make a recommendation not to approve the two suggestive amendments. You can make a recommendation to approve.
Well, I see your staff recommends imposition of 7600 acres. That was the only thing that came out of this that we did not endorse early on.
Correct.
Okay. And I don't know, I'm open for a suggestion or a motion from the commission. I don't know that our position has changed from the time we made our recommendation earlier, but that's, I can be changed.
No, I mean, I just had a question for Lynn. You know, you put in here, you got it in red, the minimum acre of land which can be used, you know, is 100, but they had already in the ordinance, you know, limited it.
The ordinance stated nothing less than five megawatts.
Right.
Correct.
Which is...
Basically the same, yes.
The same thing. So I was confused as to why that had popped up.
That's what was...
That's what they told me.
Yeah, yes. Set up a minimum of 100 acres and a cap of four percent.
Well, see, that goes back to my saying, to my, maybe this is just a gut feeling that I have, is that they do not understand the megawatt correlates to the acreage or vice versa, you know? You don't, if you've got a five-megawatt project, you know, that tells you how much land you're going to have. You know, it's not the land that tells you what you're going to do, it's your approved megawatts tells you how much land.
But Kim, I think what this is doing is that you're raising the minimum limit though because it looks like it's a factor of 10. One megawatt equals like 10 acres.
Well, eight, but yes.
Eight.
Yeah.
So at five megawatts, that would be less than 50 acres. So if they're raising the minimum to 100...
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense. And that's why I think that they are not understanding what they wrote. And I wanted to know, did they ask, you know, did they ask for some help from some consultants or from someone or did they just write it themselves? Because I just don't think that they understood enough. I think Mr. Kane is probably the only one that really has been to the meetings that, you know, has any idea, because none of the other three come to our meetings. And so unless they have done solar research on their own and tried to figure this out, I don't know how they'd know this because I try to read every article I can about solar and keep my ears open to it. And I can, you know, I can completely understand that you wouldn't understand what we have, especially this board wasn't here, you guys are here, I'm the newbie here, and this has been going on for a very long time and they weren't even around then. They weren't even around in 19, so that they wouldn't know any of this. And that's why I wanted to meet. I wanted to figure out where they got their information from so that we could try to help them because what they wrote doesn't make a lot of sense, just in the math part of it. But, you know, I don't know how you guys feel, if you want to be done with it tonight and you don't want to meet again, or you want to defer it, or whether you would talk to us, or maybe we have to talk to them individually. I don't, I don't know, but I'm not going to, to, my vote is not going to be to limit it to 7600. We've already pretty much done that. We might, I think you told me, Lynn, we're going to be, and I saw it in the paper, there's going to be a project that is having a, Purdy Solar is having an informational meeting sometime shortly.
I got an email on that today. That's next Tuesday, did it go to Lee Thomas and property the 6th or...
Yeah, the 19th, I think it was.
Whatever that is.
19.
I don't know.
But that information is just another solo company that's having a public meeting about that project. That's not going to be anything to question.
No, but I'm saying, you know, if that, if that's, if that project is going through, then obviously it's under 1,000 acres and it meets our new criteria, but, you know, how many other projects are out there that are under the 1,000 acres that meets that criteria? I don't know. You may have an idea.
Talking to one at Pleasant Shade, one on the Brent Road. Those two I've talked to the most. I get a lot of people fishing every day that tell me about construction, but...
So you just guess that, say, they're around 800 acres and there's three, well, there you're there, then you're done because you can't get any more. So what's the point of trying to make those guys break their back to not get ahead of the other one and it not be a good project because they're trying to, you know, meet this number? Because it's going to be who raises their hand first, not who has the best project, but who, you know, raises their hand first to get in line, to be seen. And I just think that's a horrible way of doing something. It's, you know, who can sloppily get their work done first, you know, gets rewarded, not who has, you know, who takes the time that is needed and get the best project. not who has, you know, who takes the time that is needed to get the best projects, because they're afraid somebody else is going to get ahead of them and use up their 3,000 acres that's left.
Okay. All right, so before us tonight, it looks like that what, and the staff has recommended that, that recommends imposition or such, but that is the very thing that we decided that was not our deal?
I would still, I would still like, I don't know what the rest of y'all think, but to study these projects on a case-by-case basis.
I think they don't think so.
I don't think you're going to have the two or three more.
That's going to be it.
That'll be done.
Because they're not, you can't develop any more projects, you know? It's just that when they, when these, when these companies go to do their budgets, and they know they've only got 1,000 acres, and they just can't make the numbers work because they've got to connect to these lines, and PJM tells them how much it's going to cost to connect to these lines. And so that 500-kilovolt line connecting to it is out of question. There will be no one connecting to it. So it will be whatever capacities left and whatever land is left hitting those, you know, mile and a half apart from each other project and, you know, mile to a transmission line, that's all that's left. And, you know, there's, like Lynn said, there's maybe two, three, four more, and that's it.
You know, I'm not going to make the recommendation. I mean, the motion, I cannot, but it appears that what's happened is that supervisors decided what they wanted to do, and now they put it back to us for us to bless it. And I'm going to open it up for the motion.
Well, I'm not blessing it. I made the motion that we do not approve 7,600-acre limit.
Or the...
Or the 100 make acre minimum.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the not to endorse the 7,600 total acreage or the 100, what's the other one?
Acre amount.
100-acre amount. And any discussion? I'm sure there'll be some discussion about this. Let's talk about it again.
What do you think, Joe?
I'm thinking that, this is Joe's opinion.
Say what?
I might have some, I said, this is Joe's opinion. I'm about to give you Joe's opinion.
Joe, how is the new Joe being?
And this may not be what you want to hear. The numbers that they have here, 7,600 and 100 acres, may not be the numbers that you guys want to see. But for Joe's standpoint of view, we need to have some numbers. We need to have some structure. We need to have some consistency with what is being brought to us. I don't think that we need to say auditively, come on, show me your stuff, we'll do it case by case, then I think we open ourselves up for some liability, because you let John do it, but you won't let Barbara do it. But if you have some rules and procedures that we follow consistently, then we open ourselves up for a safety, a safety net that we will always be in.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
Thank you.
And in a reply to that, Joe was, that's, at least, having put all those parameters from the comp plan into the zoning ordinance, and that's the rules and regulations that everybody has to abide by now. So that's, the one benefit of putting it in the zoning regulations is that that makes it a fair playing field for everybody.
Right.
It applies to everyone.
Right, it applies to everyone.
And so we wanted to kind of keep them in the comp plan so we could have the flexibility of judging each project case by case, but they kind of, you know, our hands are tied now, so.
I think that's basically what you're saying, Joe. We need some structure. We need some guidance, but having it in the plan is what we need rather than whatever.
Well, I think it's going to be in the zoning ordinance no matter what we do.
What it already is, isn't it, Lynn?
Yeah. 7,600, isn't it?
Because it's not that.
No, 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 no. All the others, the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. 5,000 acres, a mile and a half.
They passed all that.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't vote for that.
Yeah, we didn't vote for that. But they passed. I mean, they did the opposite of what we said. But I guess what you were, I don't, I really don't understand what you were saying. I have to tell you the truth, Joe. But I don't, I don't get it, because 7,600 acres is just like, how much can be developed in total? And you have to keep in mind, 4,000 is gone, so really to state that as 7,600 is not true. It's 3,000. There's 3,000, they're saying, we're going to give you 3,000 more acres to develop in solar, and then that's it. There will be, that's it, that's all you can do. There's no more solar. So we don't even need this other ordinance, because if we have one 3,000-acre project, we'd be done. That'd be it. So they're, what they're saying is, is that we're going to give you 3,000 more acres to develop in solar, and then we're cutting it off. There is no more solar. So it's first come, first served on this 3,000 acres. That's what the board wants. Kim does not want that, so I'm not voting for it. But, you know, that's what they want, because they don't want any more solar. I still believe that they don't, I believe they don't want any more solar. I think that they don't understand the whole megawatt thing, but I think that they don't care, because they don't want any more solar.
Any more discussion? I have a motion on the floor, and I'm saying, I'm assuming you're ready to vote. Now, let's get this straight, have a vote. Your motion is not to endorse...
To impose a maximum acre limit, to not to...
And a minimum.
And a minimum.
Okay. And that's all we were here to do tonight, definitely.
That's what we were here to do. They wanted us to, what they said was the maximum total acreage of land in Greensville County, which can be used for utility-scale solar, is set at 7,600 acres, or minimum acreage of land, which can be used for individual utility-scale solar facility, is 100 acres, and they wanted us to approve that. And my recommendation for us is to not set a maximum acreage for total development or to set a minimum.
So everybody don't understand the motion. If you vote ye on Ms. Wiley's motion, you'll be not endorsing this, and then we'll go from there. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor of Ms. Wiley's motion? Say aye.
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 All vote.
We need a vote.
You? Raise your hands.
I'm going to call right. Okay. In favor?
In favor of Ms. Wiley's motion?
Mr. Kane, ye. Ms. Rogers, ye. Ms. Rogers, this far as records, this is important. Close?
Yes.
This way?
Yes.
Three to two is what I have.
That's what it would have, no, that's the four to two.
I'm sorry, four to two.
Four, one, one. One abstain, one no.
Well, that's all. Okay.
Abstain.
So we got one that, okay.
Four, one, one.
All right. Next, that takes care of that. Other matters, folks.
In your agenda...
Just real quick, Kim, thank you for arranging that.
In your package, intended package, you have a copy of the planning commission annual report and the board's omnibus annual report for 2021. And also, I remind everything, the financial disclosure forms are due by the 15th of this month. I think some of you get submitted, all the others need to get them to myself at 15th.
All right.
I don't have any other items.
Anything else to come before us?
We have, we have... No, it's coming in future months.
No, 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 I mean tonight.
No, not tonight.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
I've got a motion in a second. Second, that motion is second. All in favor of adjourn, say aye. Thank you.